All right. Would the deputy clerk please read the intro?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinances of the city of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the city council meeting of the mayor and the city council of the city of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, July 24th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, in person in the city council chambers Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, Mayor Patrick Lovickson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound RCN Channel 17, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There is a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Thank, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
May please rise for the pledge. If everybody's had a chance to review the minutes, I would look for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Abstain.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, presentation of the Chicago Executive Airport Board of Directors' monthly report will be presented tonight by Director Kearns. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, elected officials, city staff. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to, to give you a brief report. A lot of activity at the airport during the summer with construction. We have, our airfield lighting project is about 90% complete. We still have some work on the beacon replacement on top of the tower that'll need to be done in the fall. There's a new hangar going up on Tower Road. If you drive by, you'll see the steel skeleton there of Hawthorne's new hangar, Hangar 22, and that should be, again, winter, spring of next year that that will be completed. In terms of construction stuff, we also have a master drainage study that we commissioned that is underway, and we expect to have that updated in the spring of '24. We're at a point where, for any new construction, we have to have that master drainage study to look at storage, compensatory storage, and so forth. We also approved a rent study that we should get in the next 60 days to review all of our fee structures and rents, including T-hangers and the larger corporate hangers that we have. The only other construction thing, we do, we have our residential sound insulation program, and we're just awaiting a letter from the state. We have $2.5 million programmed, and we will start that construction hopefully still here in the fall. It's been approved by FAA. We're just waiting for a letter from the state. Because we're a block grant state, all the FAA money flows through the state of Illinois. We can't start the project without making sure we're going to get the money from the state. So we'll be looking forward to that. Let's see. There was a meeting recently, I know Joe Wade attended with Jeff Miller, our airport director, and Johns Vandulus of the Village of Wheeling, with Harper College to discuss a grant that they had received for an aircraft maintenance program, to see if there's any synergies that the airport could provide. As you know, we do have a program right now with District 214. This would be, this is a little different. This is with Harper College, so hopefully something good can come of that. There's a dire need of aircraft mechanics and, as well as pilots, but the support for aircraft is, we need a lot of new people coming into that field. There was some money donated from the profits from our 5K and Run the Runway and so forth. We had, first of all, the highest turnout we've ever had. There were 461 runners, 193 walkers that showed up that morning. We gave $1,000 each to the 99s Women in Aviation, the Leading Edge Women in Aviation Chapter, and the Chicago Executive Pilots Association for their scholarships that they give. And there were actually two winners of scholarships this year. They each receive $3,250 in scholarship money, and one of them is a refugee from Afghanistan. So, and he's been working, I think it was, he, working in the industry, wants to work in, in the aviation industry. Finally, we also just received our economic impact study that we had commissioned. The last one we had done was in 2021. It takes a look at the economic impact to the region for the airport. I'm sure you'll get a copy of this as it gets vetted through, but just a couple of highlights that we look at. The total ongoing economic impact on Cook County, they say, is $485,519,000. That's up from $441 million, so over a $40 million increase in the economic output from the activities of the airport. The local taxes generated for the airport and airport activities, $5.5 million for local taxing entities, and about $2.8 million to the state of Illinois. Local property taxes are just under $3 million, $2,914. There's a lot of other numbers, but in each case, the trend was significantly higher, especially the sales tax side of it, and the main reason for that is our fuel tax went up significantly because of the volume, the number of gallons that we're pumping of aviation fuel is providing a lot of additional revenue through, you know, through that sales tax that we put on there. That's really all I had to report this evening. Opened any questions?
Do we have any questions? Comments? I thought Rock the Runway went really well, and thank you for that.
Yeah, it was a great event.
Yes, it was.
They have the date set for next year. I don't remember what it is right now, but it's out there if you're...
Will that change where, how it was laid out with the new hangar going up, or no?
No, that hangar was already under construction there this year, and actually, personally, I thought the, the layout with the, for the evening, the food trucks, the little new location and so forth, it worked out really well, I thought, the way they had done it. So, parking is going to become the only issue as we fill the available land with hangers, but we'll deal with that when we have to.
That's a good problem.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, appointments, confirmation, proclamations, we have none. Item six, is there anybody at, Adam Clerk, that submitted a agenda matter, public comment request?
No, Mayor, none, none at this time. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody here to comment on anything that's on the agenda? No? Item seven, the consent agenda, we do not have any items on the consent agenda tonight. So we will go right to old business. Item eight, item eight, O-2321, staff memo and ordinance approving a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant, Fortunes Cafe at 1313 Unit A, North Rand Road, Prospect Heights. This is the second reading. So if the applicant would like to step up to the microphone and state your name.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. My name is Neil Tecker from Fortunes Cafe. I'm from Schaumburg, and nice to meet you all today. Again, thank you.
Thank you. I know you submitted some additional information. I'm assuming everybody has seen that from Dan. So we'll start with, anybody have any questions about what they see in this additional information, or any questions from last time? We'll start with Alderman Cameron.
Yeah, I see that you have an undercounter refrigerator.
Yes.
So, so for that, is that going to, is that going to be for just the food? Because I see that you have the, the beverage cooler. Is that, is that going to be able to accommodate?
Yeah, the refrigerator is for the food only. The beverage cooler has all the beverages.
Okay. And then you're going to put, I know we were talking last time, like with soup and stuff like that.
Yes.
Is that, is that going to be enough room for soup?
Yes.
And everything else?
Yes, the countertop that we have mentioned, it's like a 10 feet long, and it has enough space for the soup warmer.
So the refrigeration is 10 feet below?
No. There are two separate items. If you see the, yeah. On the right bottom, if you see, that's under the counter freezer. On the left, you see, which is the big one, yes. That is a 10-foot-long countertop on which most of the equipment will sit.
So it's from here to the, to here? Or is it just?
Can I, can I come and show you there?
Sure.
Is it okay?
How many feet is this refrigerator? How big is this?
So this is, this is the beverage cooler?
Correct, yeah, and this is the undercounter refrigerator.
Refrigerator.
So is it just this?
Just this two. This is going to be the six.
So it's these two?
These two, yes.
These two squares?
Exactly.
These, these two squares? Six feet total? Oh, okay. That's great. No further questions, Mayor?
Anybody else on my left? Alderman Anderson?
So there's air fryer, and I was looking for ventilation. Did I, did I see that?
You don't need a ventilation for air fryer. These are regular air fryers, which are NSF certified. They don't need a ventilation. They are air fryers. They don't need a ventilation.
Okay. Exactly. Yeah. Right, okay. That's convention hubbing.
Right, right. I saw that.
Right. I don't think you need that.
Yeah, thank you. At the last meeting, you mentioned the soup being prepared off-site and then transported in. Is that still the case?
That we have changed our procedure. So you are going to have a pre-made soup, which we are going to store in the refrigerator, and then we are going to garnish it with the flavor, and then we are going to serve it. For the soup purpose, we are going to make it in-house.
I can't hear you.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up, please?
Oh, okay.
You pull that down. You can pull it towards you.
I wonder if his microphone's even on. It doesn't sound like it's going.
Is the green button on? On the bottom, on the base? Oh, that one doesn't have it?
Hello, hello.
No. I can't hear you.
I thought I was going deaf. I didn't know that I was going deaf. Not user, don't worry.
I'm just kidding, yeah.
If this helps.
Maybe, Patrick? Patrick, is it working?
Yeah, it's working. I'm turning it up, make sure I don't get any feedback.
All right, there we go.
Hello, hello. Isn't like my voice, I guess.
We still can't hear you. You need to be loud.
Can I, I can speak loudly. Is this good enough? Yeah, okay. I think it's working now, yeah.
Yeah, I think you answered the question, so the soup is prepared on-site.
Yes, yes. So now it's going to be on-site only, yes.
As far as safe food handling, it'll be brought up to the proper temperature in the warm pot.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Morgan Adams?
Yes, you know, I know that you've told us that your focus is on food, but I still feel, based on your menu, that your focus is on gaming. Can you give me a reason to think that I shouldn't believe that, and why I should think, I should think that food is priority?
So, the first, the first point to that answer is that this is open for all the ages. We are not restricting any age to come and visit us. The only restricted area is the gaming area, where we are going to put the electronic gate to make sure that nobody underage gets in without employees pushing the button and open the gate after checking the ID. So that's the small area that we have isolated for the gaming. Rest of the area is fully functional for a sit-down restaurant.
Again, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the rest of the area is a fully sit-down restaurant. The only gaming area is a little rectangle, if you see the plan, which is a restricted area for 21-plus only. However, the entire space is open for all the ages. So we are not restricting any age to come in and, you know, have the food. We have a full-service menu, which is a sit-down restaurant, and all the equipments that needed to cook the food is mentioned with the recipes in my, the latest, you know, pamphlet that I submitted to you guys.
Yeah, you did submit a more detailed itemized list, but quite honestly, I mean, this is an extremely limited menu for a restaurant. So, I mean, it almost, quite frankly, it, it still looks like there's some, you know, a few things to eat, but it's not really a restaurant. It still seems like the focus is on gaming. So, I mean, I'm not saying a full menu here of any type. I'm seeing a few, again, very limited items, and I just don't see the focus being on food.
No, we have the soup, we have the veggie wraps, we have three types of wraps. We have panini sandwiches, we have pizza, we have cassaria. I mean, we have pizzas. We have all type of food that we can serve, and this is strictly a vegetarian restaurant, ma'am. So, you know, our menu is completely focused on vegetarian customers.
I think the restaurant across street only offers two things on their menu: wings and more wings, boneless wings, wings without...
You bring up, you bring up a good point.
Right.
But your, your revenue from this, you ran this purely on a restaurant as far as your model for how you're going to open this?
As I mentioned to you before as well, right, in last meeting as well, that this one is going to be the largest menu that we have amongst all other places that we have. This is extended menu that we have created, and we are, we are committing to this menu, and...
I, not to, I am cutting you off, so don't let me say not to cut you off, but you're telling, I'm hearing everything that you're saying about what you're going to have there, right?
Yes, correct.
And you're saying because you have this, therefore you are a restaurant. But I guess my question is, you went to the ZBA to get a variant, or a special use for a restaurant, right?
Yes.
Which we require for any restaurant to come in town. McDonald's, to, you know, to what you're putting in. Doesn't matter, they have to get a special use. When you do that, is your model based on generating enough revenue with the restaurant to survive on its own?
Yes.
So you would open that restaurant and be happy doing that, just that?
So as I say, right, that we have a multiple stream of revenue that we are looking for.
You're not here about a multiple stream, you're here about a special use for a restaurant. Everything else that you want to do, that you've drawn this up for, is secondary to the restaurant.
Correct, correct.
So, just like we have a bunch of restaurants in town that were here before video gaming, they all operated, they all went through good times and bad times, and video gaming came along and made times good for them again.
Exactly.
Is your restaurant, today, with restaurants being as busy as they are, and, you know, can't get enough help, could you survive on just a restaurant model?
So given that we have Hershey's just behind us, that is a lot of population of the kids, which we allow them to come in and have lunch and dinner, maybe summertime is not a great time, but when the school is on, probably we are expecting a lot of revenue from, from the food.
Have you prepared a marketing plan for that? I mean, have you done a marketing plan? Have you budgeted money to spend for marketing? Because I haven't seen that. You know, where you're going to say, hey, we're going to do this, we're going to provide these specials for the kids, we're going to go over there, we're going to get to these organizations to get them to come to our place, or, or be really in touch with the community like Lucy's was, you know, or, you know, and know who they're selling to. It just seems like when people come here with a restaurant, they got a plan. And if you're a Wingstop, you've got the fact that there are 100 of them in the Chicago area. If you're a Jet's Pizza, the same thing. McDonald's, you don't have to say anything about that. You know, like, I haven't seen anything that says that you're going to drive the business to your restaurant, other than the fact that you said, well, you have to have food to get the license for the liquor, and that, you need that liquor license to get the video gaming. And you've been forthright in saying that, but I, I don't see where you said this place survives as a restaurant, because I, I look at the other places you have, you know, and there's five other locations. You did about $1 million in gaming at those locations in the last 12 months.
Yeah.
And, and I asked you at the last meeting, and I didn't have the fact to back it up, said you give away your alcohol to people that are there gaming. And I, believe me, I drink beer, I'll blow a lot of money when I go to Vegas, I don't have any problem with those licenses, right? But what I want to see is somebody coming to town to invest money in the town and set up a restaurant and operate it, not to come here to set up video gaming.
Sure.
And if you're willing to do a restaurant, I'm all, I'm down with that.
Yeah.
But I think you should show us that you can operate like that for a period of time.
So on the marketing side, I submitted the business proposal along with the ZBA meeting, and which says our marketing strategy as well. So we believe in two types of marketing. One is a paper coupon marketing plus the social media marketing. We are very heavily invested in social media marketing. And, you know, what you're saying is that to market the restaurant, we will use these two streams to market around the local area. But this is going to be marketed to local area only because it's a local retail, you know, restaurant. It's not like a, the national chain. It's a, it's a local restaurant, so we are going to market locally.
What's your background, game?
My background is IT.
Okay. But I mean, when you're opening these retail locations, it's gaming. You don't have another model like this?
This will be my, honestly, this will be my first model of a full-fledged restaurant which has other streams of revenue. That, that I am telling everyone that this is going to be my first, if I am going to be successful in this model, then I am going to create, you know, such restaurants, you know, in the other towns as well. But one time I have to start. First gaming that I had was in Streamwood. I left my IT job to get into this retail restaurant or video gaming type of a business, and that was my first, my first venture. I have to start somewhere. From there, you know, I have created, in three years, I have created five replicas. Now, this is my sixth location. It's different, but I have to start somewhere. So if I'm able to start here, then I can replicate this and then grow from there. So that is what I'm asking for, that give me a chance to, to make it work.
And I'm, I'm, I'm for that. If you want to open a restaurant, I'm for that, but I just, I don't, unfortunately, all 15, I think we have 15 locations, I won't put anybody on the spot to say, but, you know, we've had different types of people apply for these, you know, and we've seen people come in and say, oh, no, no, we're known for our food. You know, they come in and you drive by and the table's empty. I don't think they do $20 a month in food, you know? And there's no, I don't see anything showing me that that's not going to be the case with you. I don't, I don't see, other than you saying you're going to let people in that are under 21, they can come in and eat there, the school's across the street, that, that's coincidence. It's not like, I don't think that's a planning. I don't think you, I mean, to do just a restaurant, that's, there's some rent you're paying there, you got to do a certain amount to...
Yeah. Okay, so I have a few questions, I guess, if Mr. Mayor...
Sure.
And, okay, so I would say, how long has this vacant spot been in this strip mall?
Years.
Years!
Years.
So, my focus is on finding people like yourselves who want to come to our city and bring businesses that will generate revenue, because without people like you, we have no money coming into the city. The spot is vacant, it needs someone to be in that space, there are no other video gaming people here who are upset that we're going to add another, potentially another video gaming here. So the competition was be irrelevant. He's going to serve food, it's going to be open to everybody, maybe the high school kids go there, maybe they don't. Maybe, Pat, you want to eat there? Maybe you don't, right? But he went to the planning and zoning board, he provided all the information to meet all of the standards, it was approved unanimously. We need money, we need to fill our vacant retail spots. And as far as I know, we haven't turned away any Gibson's, we haven't turned away any McCormick and Schmick's, we haven't turned away all these, you know, no one's, the spot's been vacant. So whether your food generates an extreme amount of sales tax for us is to be determined, but I certainly know that your video gaming will generate revenue for the city, and it's an allowable use, and for that reason, I'm going to vote yes. And there are five people on this council who vote, and so I guess we will see where this goes.
And I agree with you for the restaurant. I have no problem this passes tonight as a restaurant, but he's going to ask him to come get a liquor license, and I don't see how that fits with this model of the restaurant. I mean, if we want to fill spaces, if the goal is to fill spaces, I promise you, we could fill every space in Prospect Heights if we're willing to take what comes in. And the idea that we're going to have, you know, a video gaming location, you know, one for every 100 people in town, I don't, I don't want to, it's not something we...
Who else is knocking on the door to fill that space?
Again, that's dangerous, that's dangerous.
Dan, like, again, I want, I like people coming to town, wanting to invest, wanting to call Prospect Heights home to help us generate revenues we need. So, again, maybe it's not the, the use that you'd like to see, or certain other people would like to see, but there's nothing in there, zero. And I'm not for vacant retail spaces. Certainly along the Rand Road corridor, that strip mall has some other uses that people may or may not be interested in, but, you know, whether, there have to be people who are interested because these stores are staying open, people are going to them.
So, I, I agree that we don't want to keep stores vacant, but we don't want a lot, we don't want any more video gambling in the town.
You might not, but you should say you...
We have a lot more, we have so many video...
You should say, I don't want more video gaming.
Okay, not that I don't want, I don't think the city needs or should have more video gambling in this, in, video gambling that is focused on video gambling. Now, he says it's a restaurant. I'm not seeing evidence that his focus is on a restaurant. I'm seeing evidence in his other four or five, five locations, other five locations.
Then you, then when you...
They're all, they're all gambling lounges.
You can vote no, then. Why are you drilling this gentleman?
I'm not, I'm not...
He's came here with a menu, he's telling us what he's going to serve.
Yeah, but this menu...
If you don't believe him, then vote no.
This menu is very limited, it's, I don't believe this is a real restaurant.
Okay, then vote, then don't tell him he's a liar, then just vote no.
Wait, but don't interrupt me. But I don't, I have not heard anything from him that his focus is on a restaurant that is convincing. I feel that this is, you know, just, again, you know, it's a front to doing more, just, really just doing video gambling. The, the, the alcohol he wants to serve is three bucks a glass. Okay, you want to give the alcohol away. The food, I haven't seen prices, so I don't know. But I'm not seeing a huge amount of ingredients, even for a vegetarian restaurant. I'm not seeing a, a full menu for a vegetarian restaurant. I'm not seeing the kind of items you would see in a restaurant that is vegetarian, that's a real restaurant. So I'm thinking, this is a front, this is another gambling place, and no, I agree with, with Mayor Lovickson, I don't want to see another gambling place that's just a gambling place and is not a real restaurant. We need good restaurants in our town. We have very few good restaurants in our town. We have a lot of gambling places that sell some food that is not really a restaurant and call themselves a restaurant. I'm really not for having more of those.
And I agree with you, and Alderman Dash, I, I know you came from the ZBA, right? And I wouldn't want to, you know, the ZBA has a very specific focus. He asked for a restaurant. Did you check all the boxes for a restaurant? Absolutely, he did. He's going to, he's going to have it built out for a restaurant and be legal with doing it.
I get it, and I know they're, they're just a recommending body, I get it.
It's not a recommending body, I'm saying, but don't you get upset when somebody says they're going to do something and then they don't do it. They come to you as a restaurant, we're here to approve this as a restaurant.
So you're saying this gentleman, so you're saying this gentleman is telling us that he's going to serve bagels with cream cheese, and we're saying he's not really going to serve bagels with cream cheese? I mean, I think he's going to serve the food that's on the menu.
That's not a restaurant. Bagels and cream cheese is not a restaurant.
Okay, then vote no, Wendy. If you don't want, if you don't believe that this is a restaurant, you have every right to vote no.
Correct, and I think other Aldermen feel the same way.
Certainly, then that's why we vote. There's five people on the... There's five people on the board, and that's why we vote. Again, we're all entitled to our opinions and what we think is best for the city. And again, for me, that place has been empty for years, and it needs to, that spot needs to be filled. And again, if there was, if there was, if the, if there was video gaming issues, they would, every one of the other video gaming people would be here to say, I don't want this guy here because I have one down the street, down the block, behind the restaurant, wherever it is, and none of them are here. So again, I don't see a Gibson's going in that spot, I don't see actually any restaurant.
Do you see a Gibson's going anywhere in Prospect Heights?
No, so let's be real, on what we're going to get, what kind of restaurant will get that spot?
That's my point.
We have very limited space, we have very limited space left in our, in our town.
Right, but we're not.
We need to be more discriminatory as to what we're allowing in based on what we already have. And if this gentleman could show us and convince us that this is going to be a real restaurant, he's going to rely on the restaurant food to make his revenue, that would be fine. But I'm not convinced. I'm not convinced based on this menu, based on the efforts that he's made, that this is a real restaurant. I think this is really a gaming lounge, and there's a frontier that he's trying to call.
Okay, so I would, so we can take a straw poll, right? You can, I mean, you've, for the reasons I've seen tonight, I would be a yes, right? It doesn't feel like Wendy would be a yes. So I guess you have some options. You could certainly come back and try to provide more information or more food menus, or you could ask to go to a vote. I don't, I'm not like trying to step in on procedural issues here, but, you know, every council member is going to have a different opinion as to, so, again, for me, filling the space and your vegetarian menu, I would be a yes.
I, I really thank you, thank you so much for being my lawyer. I'm sorry.
Call that, yeah.
I'm sorry, but, you know, that was really helpful, and.
So I know the other council members, yeah.
I would say that, let's vote. Because I don't think I will be able to provide any more information than I have provided already to convince that this is not a restaurant or this is a restaurant. As I mentioned, this is my first venture, I have to start somewhere. This is where my footstep is going to start from the city, if the city allows me to build a restaurant. If I'm successful in this venture, then I can expand from one to three to five, like I expanded in past, starting from Streamwood. So I request everyone to just look into that criteria and then vote. And then I, I rest my case with that.
Are you willing to wait a year or maybe two years to get a liquor license?
I cannot.
Okay, and you, are you willing to wait six months to apply for a liquor license?
Liquor license, I cannot wait for six months because I have to start the state processes as well.
Right, because you want to get gambling. Your, your focus is only on gambling. That's your focus, that's your revenue, that's how you're going to make money.
I think the way we're treating this gentleman is obscene, I just have to say, like, he does not, again, we have, as a council member, you have every right to vote no to something, but what, I think what we're putting this gentleman through, I'm.
I disagree totally, 100%.
All right, anybody else have any question?
Yeah.
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
You know, just my opinion, if this was your first venture and you wanted to, to make this work for your career and, you know, open more and more and more, and you want to call it a restaurant, vegetarian food is pretty exciting to a pretty good number of people. Why would you not, and, you know, it's your venue, you decide what to do, why wouldn't you want to go all out and put in a real kitchen and really cook and make it a real first experience? Then I think you'd get five yeses right away. But this does seem like a warm and toasty, you'll put it in the microwave, warp this up, it's just really like a 7-Eleven and then, you know.
Like Panera?
Simple thing.
Right, like a Panera where they put things in the microwave?
No, I don't think so, it's totally.
Well, no, they actually have a kitchen.
I don't think.
So Alderman Dash, you, you really, I believe they're going to do a Panera buy-in?
I, it doesn't, we eat.
It's not Panera.
Right, but, this, I mean, the, the, Panera has, has restaurant food.
This is, I have restaurant food.
I mean, I.
Listen, again.
I, I have no problem with the restaurant part that said you're going to ask for a liquor license and, and, you know, you talked about your three streams of revenue and, and, you know, even at your other locations, you know, I pulled one of your promotions up, and I said you were giving the alcohol away at the other promo, and again, I drink beer, I gamble. Okay, so I'm not, I'm not here trying to say that, you know, I'm some kind of good person that doesn't do that. I like both. But you, you have dollar special nights, right? You cannot, based on the volume, you expect to, to make enough, I mean, without the gambling. I mean, my, my issue, I don't know anybody else's issue, but I, and, and to Alderman Dash's point about, oh, we need to fill spaces, we have Jet's Pizza's coming, we have Wingstop over, we have Pavia Pizza, we have Lucy's that just put a place in. So it's not like they're not going in, they're going in, and those are places that, you know, I roasted Manny about his place next door, about was it going to be another video gaming place or not? And, you know, he spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on his kitchen, right? I, I don't see that investment to say that this is going to be, you know, just a restaurant. And without the gaming, it, it doesn't work. So I, we're charged with saying, is that what you're going to do? You, you went to the ZBA to ask for approval for a special use for a restaurant, and even yourself has said, without the three streams of revenue, the, the place doesn't, doesn't make it. And, you know, I, you're, you're asking for a restaurant, and, and if, if you're asking to do something that you can't make work on its own, I, I don't know how we can sit there and approve it.
That is exactly why we are asking for free stream revenue, right? Because the confidence that I ha, I have in, in the gaming part, this is the first time.
So you're expecting.
It is obvious that I don't have the confidence on the vegetarian menu alone to survive. As a businessman, I have to survive. If I make the losses and then go away from the city, it's a significant loss that I'm going to incur. I'm going to invest $150,000 in just building the space. The $1 that you are showing me, we don't have $1 beer anymore. We don't sell it $1 anymore.
Oh, this was on your website today?
Yeah, that was like a while back, it just put it on a website when it was there. We don't sell it anymore. When we have a new business, we try to attract the customers by such kind of a deal so that the customer comes in and then we have to raise the price. It is just to step, get the stepping of the customers. That's a business strategy. That doesn't mean that I'm going to sell beer for $1 to get, you know, the gambling customers. That doesn't mean that. I want to have the customers. And for, for having the customer, to get the customers in, if I have to offer some, I have to lose some money in offering below the, my, below my price, I'll do that, I'm a businessman.
So bringing them in for what?
What's that?
Why are you bringing them in? You said you have to bring the customers in, for what?
Yes, yes, for the food.
For the food.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Actually, I just had a procedural question. I don't think we have a motion on the floor. So are we going to vote on this, or it was mentioned taking a straw poll and seeing if the, he wants to extend this with a new plan, or, I'm just trying to determine what, what are we going to do here tonight?
I think we're still making comments and trying to.
And, and, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
No, no, no.
I don't mean to put an end to discussion.
No, right, no, I.
All right, so we need someone to make a motion, right?
Well, let's, let's, let's just wait, we already went down this path of doing the questions first, I already blew that, so let's, let's continue.
No, that's okay, and like I said, I don't want to dismiss any more discussion.
No, no, I, I, I think we've had the discussion, I mean, you, we could call for the vote if we do, and then we vote, and if it doesn't come out the way you want, you lose the ability to, to, to do anything for a period of time unless you ask the tables, unless you ask us to table. But like you said, you want to see, you want to see it voted on, and that's it.
Yeah, so we can just decide.
So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to, say again?
So we could go to another municipality to find some place to run his business. We, we should vote.
Yes, we should vote, we should vote.
Mayor, can I just ask a question?
Sure, one more question.
I'm just curious, how did it pass the PCBA with the questions that we have? They, they didn't seem to have an issue.
Because the PCBA, and Dan could talk to that, but the PZA, PCBA has a very specific job. Their job is to say, did you check the boxes to say that you, you can do this, this, and this? He's here before us today, just about the restaurant, right? But, but it's more than that because he's with, he has an expectation that he's going to get a liquor license if he gets a restaurant. So the ZBA does that, has not got to do with video gaming or, or alcohol. So they, they're not charged with looking at the whole thing, they're just looking at a very narrow, they have a very narrow path.
And, and I don't vote, but I, I can only say, if, if this can help bring people to a decision here, is when I first saw the agenda packet that you're doing vegetarian, it's a huge market, it's a very popular market. So I was actually happy to hear that that's coming to us. You have to make that successful, obviously, but.
I'll try my best.
The, it, it's nice to hear that we are working and seeing that you're going to be working what the marketplace actually wants. It's very highly popular. That's all I wanted to add, thank you.
Yeah, we'll try our best to make it successful if passed. Thank you.
Okay, with that, then I will look for a motion to approve, let me get to the line item here.
Can I ask a question? So if we're voting, he wants the restaurant, the gaming, and the liquor all at one time?
No, no.
No.
We're voting on the special use.
Okay.
Right, we're, we're voting just on the special use of the restaurant.
Okay.
But with that, he's not going to, you're not going to do anything until you come back with the liquor license application, right? So it is, it's not the same vote, but it's half of what the ultimate vote will be. This is the first half, the liquor license will be the second half. He's stating that if he doesn't get the liquor, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're saying if you don't get the liquor license, you wouldn't move forward with the restaurant?
It will not make sense for us to move forward with the restaurant.
Why wouldn't it make sense?
Because as I explained earlier, right, that, you know, the confidence that I have, I still have to build the confidence in the menu, right? This is a new venture for us. If I don't have the confidence, then it's a bad business decision for me.
Let me ask you this, this is one more question, I don't want to belabor this, but I am, I always say I don't want to do something, and then I do it, but how come if you have five other locations that are fully developed, right? Fully developed, operational, functional, all licensing and everything they need, why haven't you gone back to one of them to put the restaurant in to make that?
I'm sorry, what is?
Why haven't you gone the other way to say, why don't you go to your Streamwood location and put the restaurant in? It would be easier. You'd have less money to spend, it would be a lot easier lift for you to start your venture in, in, in vegetarian restaurant.
So we already have one location in Streamwood, right? So we would like to explore other cities to do the business. Otherwise, you know.
All right, but you already have a location you could put it in.
Yeah.
I'm not, you know, to Alderman Dash's point, I'm not trying to throw you out, but I'm just trying to get as much information as I can, so why you wouldn't?
That's a good point, I could, I can very well go to Streamwood and, you know, ask for the restaurant, and they would be more than happy, and they don't, they don't, I mean, they don't mind if I have the restaurant, they'll be extremely happy to, you know, welcome me and, and, you know, put the restaurant, so. And there are other villages as well who are, you know, ready to put the restaurants along with the video gaming, but I had to start with the, with this village. And the reason I explained to Dan in my meeting is that, before I started my operation with Streamwood, we were actually thinking about coming to Prospect Heights, and we saw one place right here across the street where there is a grocery store right now. There was a corner space that was available, and I had a meeting with Dan at that time as well to put a restaurant. But somehow, it did not work out with the landlord at that time because he was not ready to split the location, I mean, space. It was too huge, it was like about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, which I didn't need. So Prospect Heights was in, in my heart and brain since then. So that is why I wanted to come to Prospect Heights.
Did you build any spaces since then?
I'm sorry?
Did you put in any spaces since you looked at that one over next to the deli for you?
No, after that, we built all the.
That was the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so with that, we'll, we'll, we'll bring this to a vote. So I, I'm looking for a motion to approve item 02321, staff memo and ordinance approving a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant, Fortunes Cafe at 1313 Unit A, North Rand Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Second reading, I look for a motion to approve, and when I say that for the new Alderman, it doesn't mean I'm looking for a motion to approve, that's how we bring it out to actually take a vote yes or no. So I'm not trying to say we're trying to approve this or disapprove it, just for Alderman Anderson's information there, this is how we get it to a vote. So with that, I look for a motion to approve.
So who?
Second.
We have a first and a second, so we will need a roll call vote on this approval.
Alderman Anderson.
I'm going to say no.
Alderman Cameron?
No.
Alderman Dash?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
No.
Alderman Doley?
No.
Okay, so it's 4-1 against, so the motion does not pass.
That's okay.
So thank you.
Thank you for your time, son, I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, new business, there is none. Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports, we have the June financial report to be presented by Assistant Finance Director Bob Tannehill.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and city council members, I'd like to present the financial report for June 30th this year. We are two months into fiscal year '24. As of June 30th, our total city revenues represent about 11.6% of the budget, with our expenditures reflect about 8% of the budget. Revenues in the water and sewer funds are in line with budget and consistent with prior revenues, as is the expenditures. We're expecting property tax revenue for the second installments to come in around this month or sometime in August. Also, over the last couple of months, the finance department has taken advantage of favorable interest rates and continued to monitor city investments and cash reserves, looking for opportunities to capitalize on the current market conditions. So far, we're doing very well in that category there. So that's what I have, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Anybody have any questions for? Um, no. Okay, I'll, I'll go over, I want to go over a couple of things with you afterwards, just in the wee detail stuff, but, I appreciate that, but the, the interest, I mean, for the council to know, I mean, it's, it's going to be significant this year.
Correct.
I don't know if I've come up with a figure yet or where you think it's going to land, but it's going to be.
Uh, well, looking at, up to June 30th right now, we're at about a, over a little $100,000. At this time last year, we were about $27,000 for about the same amount of money in the funds. So, yeah, it's going to be substantial, looking at it, hopefully continues to be that way with the market conditions.
Kind of, I hope it doesn't, but, you know, it's a good sign when it's that high, so. All right, thank you very much. Let's continue with staff on my right here. Anybody have a report?
Yes. Yes, Mayor Ludvigsen and Alderman. Better Business Bureau is putting out a warning, the number one scam and fraud this year happening in the construction business is paving fraud. And we have encountered that here in town, we have had multiple people be pressured into doing shoddy work, immediate work, forced to pay cash, not given legit contracts. We've worked with our neighbors to the next door, Arlington Heights, Palatine, Mount Prospect, and Northbrook, and I got a call today from people down in Shorewood and Carpenter'sville have had the same issues. Um, it's, work's being done without permits, no contracts. People are forced to do, you know, forced into paying cash. Oh, I got deals on my truck. Be advised that all of these were knock on the door. I've got a contract full of asphalt. I can relay your asphalt for inexpensive. However, we did have one resident, uh, to the tune of about nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, and they made his legal property an illegal non-conforming that we're pursuing. Driveways require permits in the city of Prospect Heights. We do that to ensure that it meets the proper zoning and all the right setbacks. We also do the permits to ensure that all the construction materials and preparation is done correctly so that you are getting a quality product at the end of the day that's not gonna fail. Additionally, we bond and ensure all the contractors, the legitimate contractors, so if there is a problem, we have a mechanism to go after their contractor surety bond to ensure that the work's done correctly into code and that will perform as designed. Last year or two, and a little over a year ago, year and a half ago, we were able to help two residents that were taken for over twenty thousand dollars get bond money back from a fraudulent contractor that took their money. We, you don't have to sign up immediately. Be wary of people that just show up the door uninvited. Ask for contracts with very specific details in those contracts. What are you buying? Understand that the state of Illinois Attorney General's Office requires a, any job over a thousand dollars in the state of Illinois to the, requires you to have a three-day waiting period, a right of rescission. They also have a way to provide scan. And the biggest thing is, is to do your homework, you know? Don't feel pressured because they showed up the door offering you a deal that's so good that you can't pass it up because no deal is that good. If it's too good to be true, it's not good at all. And we are gonna do our best to keep on top of it, but at the end of the day, you as the homeowner are ultimately responsible for removing that shoddy work and bringing your property back up to code. Just because it was done wrong and without permits, you're still responsible for how your property is done. And so we will be having conversations with those folks, working on compliance plans, but that's the problem with fraud. It may have happened, but it can't be allowed to stay. And, um, we're here to try and protect our residents, work with our residents, work with our contractors, and these types of scams hurt our residents. So you've seen it in my, in my weekly updates periodically. This has been probably one of the worst seasons for work being done without permits that I've seen in my thirty-year career. And I don't know why, but it's happening, and the values of the contractor fraud are significant. So please be on the lookout. If you have any questions at all, please contact the Building Department. If you feel you're being pressured, you can go to the Attorney General's website, ag.state-il.us, Consumer Fraud Repair. They have ways to file complaints. But the biggest thing is, please, do your homework, do your due diligence, check with the city on the requirements for the contractors. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to speak with you during another time offline, but, uh, that's what's going on in town right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter, you have anything? Mark?
I don't think that's working.
Public Works?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, a quick update on Levy thirty-seven. Last August, as you, as the council remembers, we had a single vehicle collision, a, a suicide. Um, a guy drove into Levy wall and created a extreme amount of damage. Um, we've been working with the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, right after the accident and since then, on a plan and how we can repair it. We've gone down a couple of different paths, and the end result is we're back to the beginning, which is we have to have three sections of the wall replaced. We held off due to the financial ends of it, uh, moving forward, trying to figure out where our funding is, and we're very fortunate, uh, between Joe and Peter and working with, um, Senator Julie Morrison's office, they have some funds that are gonna be earmarked for this project. Um, the reason I'm bringing it up today is we're, we're gonna get the ball rolling, and we're working on the design and engineering and what it's gonna take to get these three sections done. The original estimate from the engineers was around nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, which we all gasped, um, cause the city does not have the funds for that. But with this appropriated money, um, I think there's around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that could be earmarked for this. So, um, just a heads up that we're moving forward on that. Timing wise, once we get it through design engineering, get it over to the Army Corps, um, I think they'll be excited to have us move forward with it, so I don't see a major delay on that side of it, but it will be working with IDOT and some other agencies because it's such a large project. If we can get moving on this, um, we'll probably, starting in sometime around December or January of this year, but the goal would be like summer of twenty twenty-four to have it completed. It'll probably be a three-month project with one lane of Milwaukee Avenue, excuse me, with one lane of Milwaukee Avenue shut down due to all the construction. If any of you have driven through the Mount Prospect portion on River Road over the last year, while they've been doing their big addition to a pump station, the traffic is managed onto one lane there. It'll be very similar for this. So, uh, it's a major thing. Um, we were really hoping that a, a repair on the wall was possible, but, uh, we're, we're back to being orchestrated that it is a three-panel replacement. So, uh, just a heads up as to where we're at on that. Thank you. Are any questions?
I had a, yeah, I had, just had a quick question. Do you have any update on the, um, Old Willow Sinkhole?
I sure do. Um, the plan, uh, Old Willow Road was open and then closed, then reopened and then reclosed. Um, they're working on it now. Their plan is to have it open for full service by Friday afternoon.
Okay.
They've had a few delays on labor and material and work and things like that, but, uh, if anyone noticed over there, they had a large aluminum pipes across the roadway. They were pumping sewage from one manhole structure around to another one so they could fix the one in the middle. It's not a very fun, uh, thing to fix, but it's what they do for a living and the guys are good at it. Um, it's just taking longer than we expected. I talked to the general contractor last Friday, trying to, you know, I've, I've said that I've got calls that no one sees activity here, so how can you be moving forward if no one's on site? But they are, and, um, they've committed to this Friday.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Uh, Levy thirty-seven, do we have any updates regarding, you know, when the completion is? If, uh, we have any updates on that?
We do not have a date set in stone yet. We have been working every two weeks, um, on updates. Currently, we're waiting on results from core drilling of the shoulder of the Palatine Express Lanes where the ramp, there's gonna be a small driveway put into access to new sluice gate that's gonna be built. So part of the specifications require core borm to make sure the ground is suitable to put a small gravel path in. We all believe it's plenty strong enough because there's a roadway built on top of it, but to, to check off all the boxes, um, not to underscore it, but it has to be tested for that. So we're very optimistic. Uh, we've been optimistic for a while, and we really slowed down, and now we're constantly getting a little bit more each time. Um, our partners in Mount Prospect and their Public Works Agency and, and administration are on these calls that we're having every month with the other partners, so.
Cause I just feel like we're just not, we're not getting anywhere, and, you know, it's like the ching-ching with all the flood insurance that, that is being generated, you know, for our area. It's, it's overwhelming for the residents of, uh, the east side.
You're absolutely correct. We are, we're moving forward, but we're, we're taking half steps instead of full strides. And we're, uh, we're whipping someone else's horse.
If I could add to that, we, uh, we have made that message of the dissatisfaction of the residents who are paying that, that money. We've made that, I think, loud and clear.
Yes, sir.
To the, uh, three agencies that we're dealing with, and we'll continue to do that. I think the, the message is now starting to resonate, I think. They're starting to see that, uh, if, if this isn't just a project. There are people that are impacted financially every year about it, so we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, but I, I just feel like the residents, you know, on the east side, you know, needs to hear that actually something's happening instead of, you know, month in and month out saying, we're, we're working on it, we're working on it, but it, I, I just feel like we, we need to go a little bit, step forward and the next step what we're gonna do because it is, you know, um.
You're absolutely right.
It gets aggravating, and then hearing about, you know, uh, you know, the, the repair of Levy thirty-seven and, and what time, you know, we're gonna start next year. That would be, that would really piss me off too, because you're like, we're getting that repaired, but we can't even get this over here completed.
And, and you're absolutely right. It, the appearance from everyone that's affected by it on the east side is that nothing's happening. And we see what's, the gear's turning, but we know it's going slow, and we're trying to coordinate these other agencies to put this on their front burner. And I think in the last six months or so, as Joe mentioned, there's been a ton of support on our side, and we, we're picking up speed with it. Being that it's a multi-agency project, that's where it all kind of gets stuck with the IGAs. The repair, on the other hand, is fixing something that was already there. Um, it's more of, I don't wanna say it's a rubber stamp, but it's a lot easier because it's an existing project. It's a fix versus finishing what should have been done years ago.
Okay, and, and this, none of our state reps are, can kind of push to kind of go a little bit further?
They've, they've been advised, certainly, um, and they have assisted on that. Uh, uh, I, I, I wish I had, I wish I could box somebody's ears, in all honesty. There are, there are times you just, you're just frustrated with this stuff, but I can't. Um, but we'll continue to do that.
Yeah.
And it's, it's incredibly frustrating. Uh, the residents pay far too much money. Uh, we've made that point repeatedly to, uh, uh, agencies to, I'll say individuals to agencies that are particularly problematic. We'll continue to do that, um, but we can't do it ourselves. We're, we're, we're dependent on these agencies.
Okay, well, if there's anything I can do, or maybe, you know, the mayor can, you know, help push, you know, you know, that'd be greatly appreciated, cause.
And nobody has come out of the floodplain, right?
No.
No parts of Mount Prospect came out based on what's been done already, so it's an all or nothing?
Exactly, and, and Mount Prospect is as frustrated as, as we are. And we'll, we'll, we'll continue to make that message clear.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make some calls. Thank you. Any other, um, reports from my right side here, from staff, left side? Chief?
Nothing, sir.
Hold on, you're elected. You're not staff, right?
Nothing.
Um, so we'll go, we'll start on this side with elected. Any reports? Alderman Cameron, Anderson?
No.
Dolek?
No, sir.
Clerk?
Just a quick announcement reminder that, uh, Greater Wheeling Area Chamber is having a golf outing on August second, and we're still looking for golfers. Some foursomes is what we really need, so if you have friends, family, uh, please let them know. Call me or call Mike Putz, the Executive Director of Wheeling Chamber, and he'd be happy to sign you up. Thank you.
Thank you. Elected on the right side here, Alderman Adams. Alderman Dash. That's it? Joe, is it good today?
No.
You're good? All right.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move, oh, I, I don't have anything either, so I think we had plenty today. Uh, April, our approval of warrants, uh, we need, um, the clerk to read the approval of the expenditures.
Okay, thank you. The, uh, approval of expenditures total came out, for the, for the approval came out to a hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-five cents. We had wire payments, two of them, on seven fourteen twenty twenty-three payroll amounted to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents. The June Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment was twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, bringing the total warrant to three hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents for tonight's council's approval, please.
So I need a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes? Um, item twelve, public comment on non-agenda matters. Has anybody turned in any forms for that?
No, uh, thank you, no.
Anybody here to comment on anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. Uh, there will be no executive session, no action on executive session, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.